It's now three o'clock. We'll call the March 4th, 2021 Southern County School Board Meeting to order. At this time, we have Kyle Morris, the dean here at Olive Branch High School. He is beginning his line. Everyone, please thank him.
Hello, gentlemen. And to the board, this is one night under the individual library.
Thank you.
We're checked.
Right, at this time, it's time to approve the agenda. We are removing items S and D from new business. With those removals, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
Do I have a written recommendation? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of them?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the student committee report.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I would like to say thank you to our school board members. We have got, obviously, a lot of display this week, and that is because we were celebrating the School Board Appreciation Week. For most of America, the School Board Appreciation Week took place in the middle of February, but in the Southern County, we were under about seven or eight inches of snow that week, and so we decided to move it back to a week with a little more, better climate. So I want to thank our board members for all that they do. We've got an awesome board, and they do such a wonderful job. And today also, in just a moment, I'm going to ask the board members to step forward. I want everyone to hear the awards that our board members have won in these last few weeks. I'll be presenting them with, from the Mississippi School Board Association. That's the training component for our board members in Mississippi. They won a board attendance award. They had over 100 hours of training as a board. They won the diploma circle award, which has to have 120-plus hours, and everybody has to have at least 24. Then the biggest award, they won the Red Apple Award, which is given to only one school board in the state. We have over 140 school districts in Mississippi, and they won the Red Apple Award, the highest number of training hours as a board for our board members. Well, above and beyond not only to do a great job representing Southern County, but also to stay current with all the new policies, and especially during a year like we've had with COVID, is making sure to stay up with everything that needs to be taken care of in the school district level. So on behalf of our school district, I'd like to thank our board members and give them a big round of applause. Follow me. If y'all meet me right there in front of the sales, I've got some flags, and I'll give y'all a quick look. Ms. Thomas. Hey, come on up. Ms. Sarah Thomas. You all right? Okay. Well, Ms. Thomas was on the board, and she actually recorded this training. Let's give Ms. Thomas a big one. All right. Y'all figured it out. Here's one of the starts. That's the biggest one. Size. Yep, two more. Congratulations. I want to welcome all of the parents that we have in attendance today. We have got a lot of family members here. We're recognizing students today from Olive Branch High School and Fernando High Schools. As we move throughout the spring semester, we want to recognize our seniors who have a 30 or higher on the ACT. So we can do that at this time.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Parents, thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize these outstanding seniors. We have, right now, we currently have 13 Olive Branch seniors that own a 30-plus club. We added one from the most recent test. I hope, you know, as we approach the May, we can add a few more. Because of baseball and softball and work, they were not all unable to be here, but I do want to recognize the ones that are here, obviously. So first off, Ms. Abigail Cook. Samantha Cummings. Ally Durden. Wesley Jones. Donovan Cream. Kyle Morris. And William Terry. Right.
Big Terry, awesome.
Thank you, parents. Good, great picture, y'all. Great job, once again. Thank you. Now, please, some graduation also. Thank you. Great job. This time, I'd like to talk to Mr. Dwayne Case. Let's hand him a toast.
Thank you, board members, for having me today, and it's my honor to recognize a great group of seniors. I've gotten to work with them for the past four years, and they made me look good. And so I'm proud of them this morning. We have three that are not here. One had a work conflict, one has gone to a ballgame, and one is off of college already. And so she couldn't be here, but we're going to get her stuff for them. But we are very honored to recognize our 30-plus club. First is Riley K. Box. Vander Chambers. Emily Dolphins. Anna Barreri. Ireland Henry. Jordan Kim. Ashley Miller. Ethan Rogers. Lauren Russ. Deckup Sutter. Caleb Scrooge. And Heather Thornhill.
Good, great bits. Take the mask off. Y'all turn around. And the parents ready. Y'all get down a little bit. Yeah? Congratulations, great job. I'll thank all the parents for coming out. Look at that young one out here, too. Williams, Master Central.
It's time for the attorney's report. Mr. King.
Yes, ma'am. We have one to the particular patients.
Now, it's the approval of minutes from the February 22nd, 2021 board meeting. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Make that motion. I need a second.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, to the consent agenda. We have item A through S on the consent agenda. Are there any changes? Anything that needed to be made? Seeing none, you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Please vote second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
New business, item A. Bids for classroom furniture for additions at Pleasant Hill Elementary, Southern Central Elementary, Fernando High School, and Lewis.
And in your package, you will find the year result of the classroom furniture package, which includes installation of the furniture. This is the elementary, this is the central primary, Fernando High, Lewisburg High. We had two vendors submitted bids, and my recommendation is to accept the lowest and best bid from furniture specialists.
Mr. Williams' explanation. Do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve bids for the classroom furniture for addition at Pleasant Hill Elementary School, Southern Central Primary School, Fernando High School, and Lewisburg High.
Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the bid? Make that motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B are bids for HVAC lighting and control replacement at Southern Central Elementary.
Yes, and bids were open on February 11th, and that's for the HVAC and lighting replacement project at Southern Central Elementary. It is my recommendation to accept the lowest and best bid from American Refrigeration Heating and Air Conditioning.
Mr. Williams' explanation. Do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid from American Refrigerating Heating and Air for the HVAC lighting controls replacement at Southern Central Elementary.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the bids for the new playground?
I make that motion. So I'm in second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item C is contractual agreement with American Refrigeration Heating and Air Conditioning Company for creative use of Southern Central Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. We're just asking, requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with American Refrigeration Heating and Air.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve contractual agreement with American Refrigeration Heating and Air for Southern Central Elementary.
Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the contractual agreement? Make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D are bids for the new playground at existing Lewisburg.
Yes, ma'am. Bids were open on February 11th for the new playground project that exists in Lewisburg Elementary School. Bids were received. My recommendation is to accept the lowest and best bid from Wilco Services.
Mr. Williams' explanation. Do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid from Wilco Services for the new playground equipment at existing Lewisburg.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the bids for the new playground?
Vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item E is contractual agreement with Wilco Service LLC.
Yes, ma'am. We're requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Wilco Services.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the contractual agreement entering into the contractual agreement with Wilco Services.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the contractual agreement? Make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item J is bids for regrouping project at Chicken Slaughter Elementary.
Can we scratch the L?
Oh, we did. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Item H, bids for regrouping project at Southern Central.
Yes, ma'am. We opened bids on February 9th for the construction project at Southern Central Elementary. Ten vendors submitted bids. They're listed in your package. My recommendation is to accept the best and lowest bid from advantage roofing and construction.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid for the regrouping project at Southern Central Elementary School. With advantage roofing.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the bid for regrouping?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item I is contractual agreement for the advantage roofing and construction of...
Yes, ma'am. We're asking permission to enter into a contractual agreement with advantage construction for the regrouping project at Southern Central.
Thanks, Thomas. For Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into the contractual agreement with advantage roofing and construction for the Southern Central Elementary School's regrouping project.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the contractual agreement?
Vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item J is bids for regrouping project at Horn Lake Intermediate School.
Yes, ma'am. Bids were open on February 11th for regrouping construction project at Horn Lake Intermediate School. It's my recommendation to accept the best and lowest bid from advantage regrouping.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the, approve the lowest and best bid for the regrouping project at Horn Lake Intermediate School from advantage roofing.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the bids?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item K is contractual agreement with advantage roofing incorporated for Horn Lake Intermediate School.
Yes, ma'am. We're just asking, requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with advantage roofing.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the entering into a contractual agreement with regrouping company for Horn Lake Intermediate School regrouping project.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the contractual agreement?
Vote.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item L, nonprovisionment of bid obligation for interactive project.
Yes, ma'am. The bids were open on June 20th, and they're projected from the school year. CDWG 1, that bid, they have since come to us and told us they are not fulfilling the bid. So we just want, we're asking the board to make note and approve the nonprovisionment of bid obligation by CDWG for interactive projects.
Thanks, Thomas. Williams' information. Do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the nonprovisionment of bid obligation for CDWG.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve? Make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item M is permission to advertise the bids, additional interactive projects for the main group of high school.
Yes, ma'am. Seeking permission from the board to advertise for additional interactive projects for the main group of schools.
Williams' explanation. Do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising of bids for additional interactive projects for the main group of schools for the year 2021.
Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to advertise the bids?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item N is request pay vendor purchasing will issue Horn Lake High School.
Yes, ma'am. Before I get into the next four or five items, I wanted to give you guys a... No board member to ask you before about purchasing the admission, but the plan wasn't... So we've got a pretty clear path. First is to continue training, make sure that that training is exhausted, and it covers everyone in the district. The second part of that is to make sure that we do follow the old training. So we're going to set the threshold, reach school, pay cost that threshold, we'll go out to a school, and we'll evacuate it and train that way. The third tier to that will be an interactive training module that individual people have to do if they break a purchase law. So if I were to break a personal, I would have to sign up, 30 to 45 members, question, answer, and they would have to show mastery of their class or what they continue. So I wanted to share that with you guys, and tell you that's what we got in place when we got coming here from the least next. All right. So we're on item N. This is Horn Lake High School. They're requesting permission to pay ACT test that was given in the fall of 2020. This was the guidance council's first year being in charge of the ACT and due to a lack of senior to purchase order. Mr. President has outlined his expectations present this from happening in the future. They're requesting your permission to pay ACT.
I'm glad to hear your comments about, because I'm a student, I have a question. Yeah, I remember you saying, saying, in general, you know, your explanation comes. I appreciate you answering my questions.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the request by a vendor purchasing will issue at Horn Lake High School for ACT.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to pay?
Vote.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item O is request to pay vendor purchasing will issue at Horn Lake High School.
Yes, ma'am. Horn Lake High is requesting permission to pay PSAT test that was given in the fall, and your packet is a letter from the testing coordinator, saying she forgot to attend the purchase order. Mr. President, who is acting principal, has outlined his expectations in a letter listed in your package. And this from after the end, they're requesting permission to pay the PSAT test.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the request by a vendor purchasing will issue regarding SAT test on the council.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to... Make that motion. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item P is request to pay vendor purchasing will issue.
Yes, ma'am. Lake Pond Corner is requesting permission to pay ACT test that was given in the fall. There's a letter in your packet from the testing coordinator, saying she forgot to attend the purchase order. Mr. President has addressed the issue with appropriate staff members and implement in the plan to ensure this doesn't happen again. They're requesting your permission to pay.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the request by a vendor purchasing will issue at Horn Lake High School.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve? Make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item Q is request to pay vendor purchasing will issue at Olive Branch High School.
Yes, ma'am. Again, this is the ACT test that was given in the fall. Mr. Stripling has addressed the issue with the staff members. They have a plan to ensure this doesn't happen again. They're requesting your permission to pay for the ACT.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the request by a vendor purchasing will issue at Olive Branch High School, ACT.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to pay the vendor?
Vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item R, request to pay vendor purchasing will issue child nutrition.
Yes, ma'am. You've got a letter in your packet from the Director of Child Nutrition. Seek permission to pay, and it was from Horizon Software. Once again, we've addressed those issues with their, with that staff. They're asking your permission to pay the vendor for services.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the request by a vendor purchasing will issue child nutrition.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve it?
Vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item S, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Item S, resolution of employment and engagement letter pertaining bond counseling of law. Yes.
So before, young law can work on any figures or scenarios, we have to have this resolution in place for them to act as bond counsel and financial advisor for any potential debt. So we're asking permission to enter into this agreement.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the resolution of employment and engagement letter pertaining bond counsel.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
Vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item T is statement of revenue and expenditures January 31st. Do you have this in front of you?
You have this funding, uh, revenue collections through January, the general funds is 122 millions, 74,00329, compared to last year at 123 million, 409,920, for the same time period. General funds continue to trend down only 1% due to lower student activity revenues, stimulus all funds, and revenues. All revenues are at 159 million, 663,704, and they are up by 8% for the same reason as the previous month, with EDLA, which was our equity distance learning fund. And the pandemic broadband federal funds for our one-to-one devices with the Wi-Fi hotspots for our students. The general funds expenditures for January are 134 million, 249,985, compared to last year at 133 million, 245,54, which is a 1% increase over FY '20, but almost a 3% lower than was budgeted for this time period. The effects of spending that were from the EDLA and the SRA funds for devices is the majority of the increase over last year.
Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have recommendations?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the statement of revenue expenditures for January 2021.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the statement?
Vote.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item U, statement of cash flow in January 2021.
The cash balance for district maintenance is 86 million, 11,036, which is a 67% of the cash balance for all funds, but stands at 129 million, 97,155. The amount invested with Smith-Schellner at the end of January was 28 million, 270,152.
Based on Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have recommendations, Mr. Russell?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the statement of cash flow for January 21st.
Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the statement of cash flow?
Vote.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item V, combined balance sheet, January 21st.
The fund balance for all general funds for January is 88 million, 372,0219, which is 67% of all funds. The overall fund balance for all funds is 131 million, 559,423. The general fund balance continues to be up 11% over FY '20, with that figure being 75 million, 95,691, mainly due to the cumulative effect of fund balance remains from last year over not in full operations and over expenditures in district maintenance and yet services through January.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet for January 21st.
Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the combined balance sheet?
Vote.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item W, certification of bank reconciliation, January 21st.
All right, statements having reconciled with no exceptions.
Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have recommendations?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve certification of bank reconciliation, January 21st.
Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve certification of bank reconciliation?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item X, revised policy JGA pandemic epidemic.
Uh, this policy is being revised to remove the cross-reference at the bottom to policy JGCCB, as DCS does not have policy JGCCB. This was an oversight on my heart when the policy was adopted at the beginning of the school year.
Thanks to Mr. Russell's explanation, do you have a recommendation, Mr. Russell?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve revised policy JGA pandemic epidemic.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve revised policy?
Vote.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item Y, revised policy JR student records.
Yes ma'am, this policy is being revised to update outdated language within the policy to be more in alignment with the Mississippi Cumulative Folders and Permanent Records Manual and the Mississippi Middle School of Young and Old and St.
Based on Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have recommendations?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve revised policy JR for student records.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve revised policy J4?
I make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item Z, personnel.
Ma'am, your personal packet is entered in page, what is the recommendation? Page two, personal changes. Page three is a provision of billow, following great teacher, who's a Wayne License Reed, paying associate rate of $75 daily. Page four works, the billow from 15th, is a Mr. Detlef Rex, or a, towards the days who will be volunteered, parent of vegetables, or students coaching for the 2022 school year. This good person for this Sarasota High School, that's Biff Sompom. Page five is a billow for the South East Hallmark, is a regular child nutrition, children requesting the payment for a T biller for her time, March of February 12th, Lake Coverville. Actually, with the 16th and 32th, and coming by Tuesday, she should be paying regard, that says. And in page six is the assistant administrative director for the 21, 22 school year.
Based on Mr. Alexander's explanation, do you have recommendations?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve personnel at present.
With Mr. Russell's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve personnel at present?
Vote.
Do I have a second?
Next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item A, A is student discipline, Mr. Bennett. Now is the time on our agenda for public comment, and you will be commenting on your student, your student's teacher, or your student's grade, you will need to make any decisive decision. What follows? Now I have requests to appear, Ms. Herring, Mr. Fox. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Fox.
You can come on up, Mr. Fox, I'm sorry. Like we're here, yeah, Mr. Fox.
Yes, ma'am. Ten minutes, alright. Good afternoon. Thank you so much, board, for, for having us here. My name is Brian Fox. This is Rod Galvin, we're here on behalf of and as members, uh, board members of the Mississippi Wrestling Foundation and Federation. I'm, I'm passing out, or, Miss Betis, passing out two packets that you can reference as we speak. But just to, to start out, I want to ask a question, is anyone here familiar with the sport of scholastic wrestling? Or have any experiences with it? Maybe? A little bit, okay? That's not, well, so we don't, we don't have any cage matches or anything like that.
No, literally, literally, pound matches.
Right, yeah, right.
I don't watch the cage.
So according to the International Olympic Committee, wrestling is considered possibly the oldest competitive sport, um, to, in our history. Maybe running is older and throwing heavy things. It's both an individual sport and a team sport, there are 14 weight classes from 106 pounds to 285 pounds. Might go here and meet, okay, um, the goal, uh, one wrestler faces one wrestler, the objective is to pin your opponent on their back. And that's all there is to it, there's a few more small, small things, but our organization's mission is to reintroduce the sport to Mississippi, to Mississippi schools. Because every child in America has an opportunity that our kids do not have, and that's to wrestle in schools. Just a little background, Mississippi is the only state in our country that does not offer, uh, we actually offer it sanctioned, but very little participation, does not offer wrestling in, in the school system. Prior to, or wrestling, uh, offer a, a state championship for, for wrestling. So prior to 2007, Arkansas was in the same situation, but thanks to the help of a few business leaders, um, today they now have 65 high school teams, eight college teams. And, and, and we believe that, uh, we're working diligently that, uh, to mirror what happened in Arkansas here in Mississippi. And we believe that by this fall, 2021, that, that we'll be able to have our first 17 high school wrestling teams in Mississippi. If all goes well. Does anyone have any thoughts or questions so far, or continue?
How did you, how did you promote interest for, in Arkansas, how did that come about? Did you go to the board first, did you go to the school first?
What, what happened was there was a very successful man who had wrestled in college, he was the team captain of his, I don't remember where he went to school now, but, um, and he essentially leveraged the power of his company to offer, um, to offer schools free wrestling mats, equipment, um, coaching clinics, and that's what we're doing as well. So based through donations from our community and the wrestling community, there's been a push since we are the last place to offer it, so a lot of people have been working together. So that's how he did it, uh, and that's how they did it in Arkansas. So, uh, if you turn to page three of, uh, the handout, it has the, the pretty picture on the front. It says, uh, so the demographic section, I just want to highlight a few points. Wrestling gives inactive students who may not do the mainstream activities, football, basketball, other activities, it gives them another opportunity to get involved with their school community. It's an egalitarian sport, so regardless of size, of ability, um, everyone can wrestle. Remember, we have our, our weight divisions from 106 to 285. It provides, it even provides a mainstream opportunity for sports competition for, for disabled students, so visually impaired, deaf, um, any other disability. When I was in high school, we had a member on our team who had Down Syndrome. Mississippi School for the Blind is actually the only school from the beginning, 1974 until now, to continuously have a wrestling team. Um, the reason that we can do that is because you maintain contact the entire time. So also, there's no, there are no bench sitters in wrestling, both JV and varsity, uh, compete every single time in our dual meets, which is our weekly game, and then also in tournaments. The only reason anyone would sit out is if they're injured. So there's a lot of participation. Some interesting statistics are, uh, from across all three NCAA divisions. Wrestling has the second highest percentage of first-generation college-bound students. Uh, it ranks fifth in African-American participation and second in Hispanic participation in the NCAA. Also, women's wrestling is an Olympic sport, and in 2020 was the fastest-growing sport in high schools, uh, with 28,000 participants, 29 state associations that approved or that sanctioned a, a state championship for girls. Uh, wrestling contains all the benefits that, that, that every other sport does, you know, building confidence, hard work ethic, but I would say where it excels is the sense of, uh, self-reliance, of, of self-responsibility. And the reason is because in wrestling, if you lose or if you make a mistake, there's no one else to blame but yourself. You're out there on that mat with one other person, it was your training, it was you in that moment. Um, so I think that's really powerful, it was in my life. Uh, my final point here is, uh, for those mainstream athletes, especially football players, which I know football is, is big here, uh, cross-training, offseason cross-training with wrestling is one of the best things a football player can do, or, and, and actually, in this, I've got an outline in this, in this first handout, that lists a lot of the reasons why. But, um, it's, it's one of the best things football players can do. There are numerous NFL top coaches and players, college coaches and players, who attest to the significance of, of a wrestling experience in they, in their recruiting and in their, in their play. So, the benefit of the kids is, is reason enough, I think, to, to welcome the introduction of, of a sport, but I know money is still important. And so, in the other, in the other handout, um, looks like this, it should have the Sarasota County School logo at the top, we've outlined a few numbers for you. Wrestling is a relatively inexpensive sport to, to start, or to, to maintain. The initial startup cost is a wrestling mat, which can go from $6,000 to $12,000, that lasts 20 years. Headgear to protect the ears of the participants, and then, uh, uniforms. So then we, we recommend having two pair of uniform per weight class, with 14 weight classes, it would be about $1,400. And then you've got your, your annual operational costs, salary of the coaches, um, and we recommend one wrestling coach, one head coach, and then as your program grows to 20 or more students, add another, an assistant coach. The reason is wrestling is a very, it, it's a martial art, so it's very, uh, requires a lot of specific instruction and, and assistance. We, operational possibly for a, for a, for a wrestling season would be between $5,000 and $10,000 or more, depending on how much you travel, depending on how much you pay your coaches. We have, uh, we have some, some ideas for, which have been successful everywhere else in the country for how to raise money. If you were to host a tournament, uh, tournaments average a profit of $3,000 to host a tournament, a minimum, uh, 3,000 to 6,000 is, is our estimate. Uh, Rod here is actually a coach in the Memphis area currently in high school. We, uh, we've, we've outlined it all here, uh, maybe we're missing a few things, but if you were to involve community businesses to sponsor a, a weight class, for example, for a season, maybe have a vinyl banner, if it was $500 per weight class, that's $7,000. If it was $1,000 per weight class, that's $14,000. And those are just a couple ideas for how to raise money, where, uh, where it wouldn't be a strain on our budget. Let me see here, so, just to review, I think my time is running short, so just to review, what our organization is offering, is, uh, we're offering for the first 15 schools this year to express interest and, and make a decision that they want to give wrestling a try. We're going to offer for free the wrestling mat, the, uh, the uniforms, the headgear. Where we have an, an arrangement with the National Wrestling Coaches Association to bring in the best coaches in the country to, uh, do a coaching clinic, because it's going to be hard to find qualified coaches for a sport that doesn't, doesn't really exist or have participation. So they've offered to bring people in to, if we can get a, a list of people who are going to become coaches. We have the same arrangement with referees, they're going to come in, um, to certify referees. So we're going to offer that, we're all going to offer assistance in scheduling, we have a network, uh, starting with schools in Tennessee, Alabama, Louisiana, the, uh, Arkansas that would like to, that want us to be involved in their schedule. And then, um, access to our, uh, we have a, in, in starting to talk about wrestling, a lot of people around our state have come out, who've moved here from other places, who have experience in wrestling, and they are eager to volunteer in any way they can, coaching, any other assistance. And so we would be, uh, we'd be able to connect you with, with those people. What we're asking you of each school, um, we'd like to know, we'd like, I, I think the, the athletic director or principal of each school, uh, needs to contact the NHSAA if they want to add a support, you all know far better than I do what the process is for that, but, um, we would need, we would need to be notified. And we've asked that schools would have a, a decision by May 15th of this year, so that we have time to ensure we have the mat and the equipment here, so that we can begin the training and the teaching for the upcoming season, which would be in November is when it would begin, it's a winter sport. And, uh, we ask that, and then we recommend if a school finds someone on their staff currently to, to coach the team. In other states, it's oftentimes an assistant football coach, and, and if they wanted to volunteer, or if you wanted to stipend, whatever, uh, whatever situation works. Uh, and then we would, we would bring in the National Wrestling Coaches Association, um, at, at a later date to, to do the coaching clinics. Uh, also then, we would just agree on what color you want your mat to be, what you want your uniforms to look like, um, and all, and all those, those details. Then we'll order it, and we'll help prepare your school for its first wrestling season. So that is all I have, does anyone have any questions? Or is there, is there anything that, um, is kind of glaring to you of any reason why? Or is there, is there anything that's kind of glaring to you of any reason why, why, why you wouldn't want to support introduction of wrestling?
Typically, is it in the wintertime or what year?
Yes, sir.
It's like November.
November to the end of February, Tennessee just had that.
Basketball. Exactly. What about facilities? What, what is typically, how they share those?
Right, so, people that practice in cafeterias, classrooms.
There are classrooms, field houses, they're not off-campus, but a lot of, a lot of people like, we've wrestled in cafeterias before.
A wrestling mat is, the high school minimum requirement is 38 feet by 38 feet. And they're very lightweight, there's, there are heavier ones, they're double-sided, which are more durable, but then there are, there are lightweight ones that are very easy to move and pick up, and so anywhere where there's a flat open space, you can roll a mat out for a practice, roll it back up, pick it up and move it, or just.
Mat square. Freakish, right?
It is, it has a round circle.
Yeah, kind of like this folks right here, like a square circle in the middle.
Yep.
What about the Mississippi House School of Health Association, president of the AM and.
Yes, sir.
State chairman.
Yes, sir. So they, they have said, if you look in their handbook, the latest one, there is about, I think there are three sentences about wrestling. They said that if we can reach 50% participation, they'd be willing to, at least that's what it is now, 50% participation, to be willing to organize a state championship, they said, and that's about 100 schools, they said if we could get to 100, they'd be willing to do that. They said if we can get to 30 or 40, they'd be willing to organize an invitational, kind of pseudo-state championship. And before that, we're in the process of finalizing a wrestling league, the Mississippi Wrestling Federation, they could put, they could host a tournament until that point. We're getting assistance from A A U and U S A Wrestling now.
So, you say, I imply to reintroduce this policy?
Yes.
If we previously have wrestling?
Yes, sir. So wrestling is currently sanctioned in Mississippi already. I've, I've, I've done some digging and I've, I've talked to a few people who were involved with it in the past. I believe it was introduced in 1974. And, and the last team member that I spoke to, at least in the Lee County area, I live in Tupelo, was 81 or 82, and they said at that time, there were about 15 schools that they remember competing against. And so I say reintroduction, it hasn't fully gone away. Like I said, this school for the blind has been, has had a team the entire time, and there's one other school that participates currently, and they have for 12 years now, that's Ocean Springs High School. So reintroduce and rejuvenate.
And this sort of the perfect place to start off, because right over the border in Memphis, we have 19 schools that have wrestling, or Arkansas, they have wrestling there as well, so you can compete and get enough matches, and with Minnesota being one of the biggest, if not the biggest county in Mississippi, if we can get a start here, we believe, growing out and all the other counties will pick it up, if the big counties.
I, I spoke with, I spoke with the athletic director for the district, and on the phone, he was supportive, but he's, he wanted me to speak with the other athletic directors. I was only able to get in touch with two of them, South Haven, Mr. Pounds, I believe, and he said they're 1,000% on board, but they said, you know, you all like to operate as a district, and so we have to see what can come of that, and so that's why we, we asked to appear here today. If there's no questions or, or anything, or anything else, I will take my seat. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Now I need a motion for consideration of closed session, just in terms of whether the board should interstate the session on the following matters, potential litigation matters to them, and we're closed for you. Make that motion. Someone will come back and inform me whether we stay in the closing session. Recession meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 22nd, 2021. Thank you. All in favor? Aye.